Good morning, everyone. This regular meeting of the Mobile County Commission is now called to order. If you would please stand for the invocation. It will be given this morning by Pastor Bobby Lassiter, the discipleship pastor from Christ United Methodist Church. And this is a, I'm very pleased this morning because Bobby is one of the pastors where I attend church. One of the four, well, of the, one of the members of the pastoral team, one of the four pastors. And we're just so happy to have you here this morning. Thank you for joining us. And afterward, if you would please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Will you bow with me? O gracious God, we thank you for this space that you have prepared for such as a time as this. We thank you for the hearts and the souls and the minds that have prepared for this very moment. We thank you for a Holy Spirit that has come before us and Lord that is guiding us each and every way. We ask today that you guide our hearts and our minds and our souls. Ask for you to guide the voices here that are within this space. We ask for you to specifically bless Commissioner Ludgood and Hudson and Dewitts. We pray that they are guided by you and you alone today to better build this county and Lord ultimately our state. We thank you for this moment and we give it all over to you. Amen.
I would believe in the life of the United States of America. And to the Republic, which is sacred, one nation, under God, indivisible, ever and ever.
Please be seated. Thank you again, Pastor. Do we have any speakers signed in?
We do.
I think we do have, wait a second. We do have, we do have some resolutions to present today. That's right. I'm so sorry. In celebration of AmeriCorps Week, we have joining us today Tony Robinson of the Foster Grandparent Program, Lorraine Reynolds of the Senior Companion Program, and Stacy Killingsworth of the Retired Senior Volunteer Program, also known as RSVP. Ladies, if you would join us down front, please. Everybody made it on time today. We're so happy to have you here and to recognize you and the work you do in our community. And we have a resolution for each of you, but it reads, "In honor and recognition of AmeriCorps Week", which is March 12th through 18th, 2023. Whereas AmeriCorps Week is an opportunity to recognize the dedication and commitment of more than 1.2 million Americans who have chosen to serve their country through AmeriCorps and millions more who have served in AmeriCorps Seniors and their community partners. And to encourage more Americans to follow their footsteps in service. We applaud our very own AmeriCorps Senior Programs of Mobile County, which are the Foster Grandparent Program, Senior Companion Program, and Retired Senior Volunteer Program. And whereas AmeriCorps and AmeriCorps Seniors Programs provide opportunities for more than 200,000 Americans to serve their country through service at nonprofit schools, public agencies, and community and faith-based groups across the country. And whereas AmeriCorps members and the AmeriCorps Senior Volunteers encourage collaborations and partnerships, leveraging millions of volunteers in service and acquiring the support of business foundation and other local partners to increase the effectiveness of their incentives. And whereas through their service, AmeriCorps members and AmeriCorps Senior Volunteers strengthen the lives of their families, communities, and Mobile County, Alabama as a whole. And whereas AmeriCorps members and AmeriCorps Senior Volunteers demonstrate commitment, dedication, and patriotism by making an intensive commitment to service, a commitment that remains with them in their future endeavors. Now, therefore, let it be resolved that the Mobile County Commission designates March 12th through 18th, 2023, as AmeriCorps Week in Mobile County and urges residents to thank AmeriCorps members and alumni and AmeriCorps Senior Volunteers for their service and to find their own ways to give back to their communities. Let's give these ladies a round of applause. Would anybody like to say a word or two? No? Okay.
First of all, I would say good, like to say good morning to all of you and to let the county know that we are very, very grateful. We're honored to be a part of the Mobile County Commission. One goal, one team, and we're excited about it. I do want to mention that because of COVID and all the things that we have experienced with COVID, we are recruiting additional volunteers. We need your support, everyone in this room, to help us recruit seniors who can give back to the community as they have in the past. So that's, that's one of the things that I wanted to mention is that today is that we're honored to be a part of the commission.
You know, it's the volunteers that make or break the community. And you have to have organizations such as these to organize the volunteers to come and serve the community. And so your role is just critical. And we want you to know that and how much we appreciate you and all the work that you do. Very good. Now, do we have anyone signed in to speak this morning?
We do. We have one speaker signed in. It's Mr. John Johnson, and he would like to speak about the 1.5 million of Pritchard Water Board.
Okay, Mr. Johnson, if you would join us at the lectern. If you wouldn't mind, please giving your address as well for the record.
Yes, good morning, County Commission and others. Again, my name is John Johnson. The address is 125 East Clark Street, Pritchard, 36610. I am here to speak today, even though I was forewarned by the recording secretary as I signed in that the contract has already been signed. But still, I'm gonna press my way forward and speak and represent for the concerns of the people of the city of Pritchard. I'm here today, commissioners, to address the points that were shared with me, the instructions that were shared with me at the last meeting that I spoke to you on February 27, 2023. At that meeting, Commissioner Ludgood assured me that the 1.5 billion dollars would is an offer as assistance to Pritchard Water Works and Sewer Board. And so did Mr. Randall Dewitt and Commissioner Hudson. Let me know that that was federal and ARPA money and that if it was not spent the way that it was supposed to, it would, someone would have to pay. So therefore, I don't want to be one of those people that have to pay. So that's the reason why I'm here. On March 6, 2022, we had a meeting that I was under the assumption at Pritchard Water Works and Sewer Board with all five board members that we would accept your gift, Commissioner Ludgood, of 1.5 billion dollars. However, that was not the case. It was to accept and also to approve a list of items to be taken care of and paid for by the Pritchard Water Works and Sewer Board and reimbursed to the county, by the county, excuse me. That was not the deal. That was not my understanding when I left here on February 27. Those, that list was not put together by the five-member board. My operations manager stated that he and board attorney, which is also your attorney, one of your attorneys, Jay Ross, they put together a list to be presented at that meeting. However, I am here because I have people in the district that I represent that have repairs that are to be completed and that need to be completed and repaired. And I wanted and thought that I would have some input on that. Now, I have spoken with Attorney Ross this morning as I was sitting back there, and he reassured me that that could happen and that he would assist me this evening at our 4:30 board meeting in making that happen. I'm here along with other citizens to ask that the Pritchard Water Board be looked into being turned over to receivership, meaning that, you know, someone can be appointed to make good decisions over at Pritchard Water Works and Sewer Board, someone that would be responsible and take into consideration the entire customer base and not just 60% of it. We have been trying to reach out since March the 6th to you, the County Commission, but at no attempt was, was able to. So again, that's the reason why I am here, because I want to be in compliance with whatever it is that ARPA asks and that to let you know that the citizens of the city of Pritchard do want assistance, they appreciate assistance, but they do want leadership that's gonna do right with that assistance. So again, County Commission, on behalf of the people and myself, we are asking for your oversight with this project and this gift of 1.5 million dollars. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Does anybody have questions? Mr. Ross? Any comments regarding Mr. Johnson's comments about his concerns about the handling of the money?
The 1.5 million dollars that the County Commission authorized to the Pritchard Water Works and Sewer Board was approved at the meeting last week. The list of projects was illustrative of lists that they could do. I did tell Mr. Johnson that if the board wanted to do different projects as long as it met the criteria within the contract, that that probably would be okay. You know, the 500,000 is for point repairs for water lines broken within the community within their system other than Alabama Village. And a million dollars is appropriate to fixing, repairing, or upgrading lift stations, sewer lift stations. And the list that was in the contract was provided by their operations manager, Mac Underwood, which was an illustrative list of those areas that needed help outside of Alabama Village. I told Mr. Johnson that if the board didn't like that listing and they wanted to spend it on different lift stations and that would be up to the board to make that decision. And then if the money is spent in accordance with county rules and following all federal, state, and local rules and our requirements, those documents would be submitted, reviewed by county finance, and paid if appropriate.
So their documentation, they'd have to meet certain criteria to have all that documentation approved and to move forward.
That's correct. Properly engineered and properly bid and prove up the money. The money went for the purpose that is so stated. Operations manager, Mr. Underwood, is also aware that Mr. Johnson had some concerns. They may bring it up at their meeting tonight.
But there's accountability really at every step along the way.
There is, but for the accountability, they spend the money. They have to produce receipts, documentation, support their expenditure to the satisfaction of the county before the county reimburses up to the 1.5 million.
So it's a reimbursement process. And unless they follow all the criteria, there's no reimbursement.
That would be my correct assumption, Commissioner Hudson. Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Appreciate you being here today.
No more speakers?
Okay, Lynn, I think we're ready to move forward.
Okay. Number one, approve the minutes of the regular meeting of February 9th, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Number two, approve the list of claims.
So moved.
Second.
Number three, approve application for transfer of retail beer, retail table wine alcohol license submitted by Dolgin Corp. LLC for $1.000.78.53.
So moved.
Second.
Number four, adopt the resolution authorizing request of the sheriff's office to dispose of certain items from fixed assets inventory list.
So moved.
Second.
Number five, approve appropriation contract with Sarahland Area Chamber of Commerce in the amount of $12,500 in District 1 funds for operating expenses.
So moved.
Second.
Number six, approve sponsorship agreement with Mobile Art Council, Inc. in the amount of $1,000 from District 1 funds for its annual alters and awards celebration.
So moved.
Second.
Number seven, approve sponsorship agreement with Victory Health Partners, Inc. in the amount of $2,500 from District 1 funds for Hope for Healing Events.
So moved.
Second.
Number eight, approve appropriation contract with Citizens for Better Grand Bay, Inc. in the amount of $30,000 from District 3 funds for general operating expenses.
So moved.
Second.
Number nine, approve appropriation contract with Board of School Commissioners of Mobile County in the amount of $9,500 from District 1 funds for playground equipment at Orchard Elementary School.
So moved.
Second.
Number 10, approve appropriation contract with Allentown Children First Parent Teacher Organization in the amount of $20,000 from District 2 funds for oning extensions for the carpool canopy at Allentown Elementary School.
So moved.
Second.
Number 11, approve appropriation contract with Clark Shaw Magnet School Parent Teacher Association in the amount of $20,000 from District 2 funds for safety and security upgrades and professional development at Clark Shaw Magnet Middle School.
So moved.
Second.
Number 12, approve sponsorship agreement with Keep Mobile Beautiful, Inc. in the amount of $3,000 from District 2 funds for Love Your Community Earth Day Celebration.
So moved.
Second.
Number 13, approve appropriation contract with Mary B. Austin Parent Teacher Association in the amount of $20,286 from District 2 funds for technology equipment, Brain Pop Educational Resources, physical education, heart rate monitors, and classroom seat sacks at Mary B. Austin Elementary School.
So moved.
Second.
Number 14, approve appropriation contract with Pritchard and Youth Services, Inc. in the amount of $2,500 from District 3 funds for its ambassador program.
So moved.
Second.
Excuse me. Number 15, approve appropriation contract with the Board of School Commissioners of Mobile County in the amount of $18,800 from District 3 funds for a new parking lot.
So moved.
Second.
Number 16, rescind Mobile County Commission's action in May 23rd, 2022 minutes. Agenda item number five, approving memorandum of understanding with Mobile Regional Center Alabama Institute for the deaf and blind for non-exclusion use of the parking lot at Bay Hayes Building in safe space in the event of an emergency.
So moved.
Second.
Number 17, approve adding statement of work number four for contract with Alight Solutions LLC to provide application management services related to workday system for a period of 15 weeks.
So moved.
Second.
Number 18, approve renewal of annual maintenance agreement with Elite Thompson Reuters Business for Mobile County Attorney's Office for $2,068.53.
So moved.
Second.
Number 19, hearing held at the conference. Number 20, approve appropriation contract with Gulf Coast Ethic and Heritage Jazz Festival Productions, Inc. in the amount of $10,000 from District 1 funds for the Marcus Johnson Summer Jazz Camp.
So moved.
Second.
Number 21, approve employment contract with Kayla Seewell for administrative and legislative services for the Mobile County Legislative Delegation pending legal review.
So moved.
Second.
I'm gonna abstain. I'm not sure what I'm being asked to vote for. It's been a moving target. And what I have seen appears to be outside the MIRI system. And for that reason, I can't support it.
Number 22, approve lease to Mobile Museum Board, Inc. for the African Town Heritage House to showcase Hotel de exhibit, which will include historical artifacts and educational program pending legal review.
So moved.
Second.
23, approve lease for 355 North Ann Street, Mobile, Alabama, known as the Franklin House to Friends of African Town American Heritage Trail, Inc. doing business as Dor Franklin Finley African American Heritage Trail Mobile pending legal review.
So moved.
Second.
24, authorize execution of software agreement and associated fees scheduled between Stripe, Inc. and Mobile County Commission to accept credit card payments for all departments under Mobile County Commission.
So moved.
Second.
25, approve contract number one to the development of a Mobile County Park System Master Plan Contract with Design Workshop, Inc.
So moved.
Second.
Number 26, approve termination of ground lease dated March 22nd, 1999 and transfer all improvements between the Board of School Commissioners of Mobile County and Mobile County Commission for the Sims Community Center Park located at 10141 Moffett Road pending legal review.
So moved.
Second.
27, approve termination of operational and management lease agreement dated March 22nd, 1999 as amended between Mobile County Commission and Sims Recreation and Community Center, Inc. pending legal review.
So moved.
Second.
28, award bid to C.A. Owens and Associates, Inc. for detention lock inspection and cleaning for the total bid in the amount of $96,320 for various locations.
So moved.
Second.
29, authorize assignment to PH&amp;J Architects for fly remediation measures of government plaza. Work will consist of professional services to implement measures recommended by Alabama Cooperative Extension System Department entomology. Proposed fee is $22,450.
So moved.
Second.
Number 30, award bid to Duck Doctor for Government Plaza 10th for duck cleaning for a total bid of $38,000.
So moved.
Second.
31, approve agreement with Community Foundation of South Alabama in the amount of $5,000 from District 1 funds for creation of a donor advised endowed fund to support the acquisition and maintenance of sites of historical significance relating to African-American to Mobile County. Deposit $5,000 from District 1 district funds in said fund and authorize the President of the Commission to sign all relevant documents.
So moved.
Second.
32, approve termination of a lease agreement between Mobile County Commission and Sims Women's Club or Sims Senior Center.
So moved.
Second.
33, approve operational management lease agreement between Mobile County Commission and the City of Sims for Sims Senior Center property located at 9635 Moffett Road.
So moved.
Second.
34, approve agreement with Mobile Mystics Body Girls Association to lease county-owned voting equipment and to reimburse for related personnel, personnel expenses pending final legal review.
So moved.
Second.
35, consider taking the following action on bids.
So moved.
Second.
36, approve a license support and renewal for Samsara, Inc. for GPS tracking license under the current purchasing cooperative Sourcewell in the amount of $9,935 first year payment and $9,855 beginning two-year for the engineering department.
So moved.
Second.
37, approve renewal of support maintenance agreement with Converge One for Fortinet Co-Term Fortin Analyzer VMS Series Security System in the amount of $4,316.19.
So moved.
Second.
38, approve renewal of annual license with GoTo Technology USA, Inc. for GoTo Meeting Services in the amount of $6,495 for the County Commission.
So moved.
Second.
39, approve county levies for the alcoholic beverage license for fiscal year 2023 through 2024 as follows.
So moved.
Second.
Number 40, approve professional services contract with Southern Earth Service Sciences, Inc. to provide professional environmental services.
So moved.
Second.
41, approve a change order number three for Escotaba Hollow Park and Campground Improvements Phase 1A in the amount of $53,838.9 and increase contract time by 126 working days due to impacts from weather events and supply chain delays.
So moved.
Second.
42, approve 36-month lease agreement with CPC Office Technologies and Sharp Electronics Corporation under the current state of Alabama for the following.
So moved.
Second.
43, approve a right-of-way and/or easement agreement for Track 1 in the amount of $460 for Natchez Trace Road, gray, drain, base, and pave.
So moved.
Second.
44, authorize acquisition of property and acceptance of the right-of-way deed and/or easement from the following property owner for the following project, the Board of Water and Sewer Commissioners of the City of Mobile.
So moved.
Second.
45, approve the annual software maintenance agreement renewal with Ledgman for Topcon on Magnet Data Collection Software for Topcon data collected in the amount of $645.
So moved.
Second.
46, approve supplemental agreement, number two, with HO Weaver &amp; Sons, Inc. Tanner Williams Road Resurfacing Restoration Rehabilitation.
So moved.
Second.
47, approve, Commissioner on 47, we're just gonna approve the first part. Second part is gonna be held over. So it's 47, approve preliminary and final plat of Hanson Investment Subdivision.
So moved.
Second.
48, approve preliminary plats only of Johnson Ranch Phase 1 and 2 and preliminary plat only of Hampton Ridge Unit 3.
So moved.
Second.
49, approve setting the following speed limits as listed below for roads, segment roads, and subdivision streets.
So moved.
Second.
Number 50, authorize advertising and receiving bids for Hog Road Resurfacing Restoration and Rehabilitation.
So moved.
Second.
51, commission announcements and/or comments.
Commissioner Dewitt, I know you have an introduction.
Yeah, I just wanted to introduce everyone to Hunter Ryan. Hunter's senior at Faith Academy, and he's taking his government class there. And he's shadow- And, uh, he's, uh, shadowing me today. I guess I was the best I could come up with for him. Um, but, uh, he, like I said, he's a senior at Faith Academy. And I believe Hunter has had, uh, several scholarship offers from Mississippi State and Auburn University in their engineering program. So, um, I'm hoping that he chooses to attend Auburn next year. So War Eagle, and thank you for being here with us today.
Welcome, Hunter. And we hope when you, when you finish your education, you come back to Mobile County to work.
Amen.
We want to keep you here. Commissioner Ludgood? Uh, I have nothing. We're ready for an adjournment?
52, approve request for motion to adjourn until March 27th, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
We stand adjourned. Have a good day.